Let's call this committee, the whole meeting for January 2nd, 2024 to order. Happy New Year all. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Danell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Alderman Seville and Alderman Yamas request permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80 based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. Their motion to allow
So motion second.
both Alderman Yamas and Alderman to participate. Motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2023? Been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. There is no mayor's report for this evening. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda committee reports. Chairwoman Patty Smith, can you give the Building Zone and Economic Development Committee report?
I sure will. The Building Zone and Economic Development Committee meeting scheduled for December 23rd, December 20th, 2000, yeah, I've been off work too long. I can't read. Scheduled for December 20th, 2023 was canceled, so there is no report.
All right, let's go on to the next committee. Chairman Franco, can you give the Finance Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on December 21st, 2023 and reviewed the following items, 23-0882, a resolution to provide annual true-up to Ciantel Solutions LLC, 2021 North Yola Road Aurora, for preventive maintenance and support of citywide CCTV for a total of $71,765. And the increased cost is due to the deployment of additional cameras, many at River Edge Park.
Can you say?
Unfinished.
Unfinished.
Okay, next one is 23-0883, a resolution to provide annual true-up to Ciantel Solutions LLC, 2021 North Yola Road Aurora, for network infrastructure management services of citywide network infrastructure for a amount not to exceed $139,050. And this again is due to an increase in network devices from 250 to 527 devices.
Unfinished. Unfinished.
And the last one is, excuse me, 23-1044, a resolution authorized in provision of America Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for Aurora Civic Center Authority, ACA, in the amount of $4,500,000 for 2024. And Mr. Minnick may be here to present.
Thank you. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. The city's in receipt of a funding request from the Aurora Civic Center Authority in the amount of $4.5 million for 2024. The Aurora Civic Center Authority, or ACA, is a key driver of economic activity in the city, and particularly in the downtown. ACA is one of the four main pillars of economic activity that is contained within the city, and they operate the Paramount Theater, River Edge Park, and Copley Theater in the downtown. Many local businesses in the city itself are beneficiaries of ACA's high-quality and affordable productions. This enhanced economic activity creates consumptive tax revenue for the city and is very important to maintaining a healthy and vibrant downtown. Locally and nationally, arts and cultural organizations have experienced significant financial consequences from the pandemic. Trends in lower attendance, fewer subscribers, and higher costs have been prevalent and have lingered after the pandemic ended since theater companies have reopened. In some companies, these circumstances have led to instances of layoffs of personnel and reduced or suspended programming. While the, while ACA has not had to implement the same drastic measures as some of the performance companies noted, ACA has not been immune to these national trends. The circumstances experienced have created negative impacts to ACA's financial results since the pandemic began, and those consequences have lingered. Operational changes will likely be necessary to adapt to prevailing conditions in the theater industry. This presents a two-pronged situation that needs to be addressed. Number one, we need to shore up funding in the short term so that operations can continue into 2024. And additionally, we need to adopt a longer-term, sustainable operating plan allowing for optimal financial performance in the long term. This plan will be presented through the City Council in the first quarter of 2024. The city has the main, the means through America Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding, to provide financial assistance to shore up operations in the short run. The city did provide similar assistance to ACA in 2023, and it was anticipated that the need would likely extend into 2024. In order to bridge the anticipated short-term funding gap, assistance in the amount of $4,500,000 to ACA is recommended from the ARPA funding allocation. This funding support would provide resources for ACA in the short term while also facilitating the development of a long-term, sustainable plan to allow ACA to adapt to the slow recovery in the theater, theater industry and the climate in which they currently operate. We do have representatives from ACA here tonight. Mr. Tim Rader, the CEO, is present, and I believe he has a video that he would like to share with us.
Tonight onstage, as it has done for nearly 100 years, Paramount will make the unbelievable real. That's what happens in theater by its very nature. It challenges us to believe, to imagine the wonders that arise from human inspiration, to consider the possible. On our path to this moment, Paramount has compiled a long list of improbable accomplishments, like producing a very own Broadway series, to opening our school of the arts, and transforming our community through the power of live entertainment. Things that doubters said theater could never do. But like a character in its own play, Paramount has overcome long odds to discover an inspiring new sense of self. Beyond the footlights, beyond the applause, lies a profound purpose. Paramount Theater is more than a stage. It's a catalyst for change. Today, the energy of Paramount's performances, the rhythm of actor concerts, and the promise of our school of the arts have breathed life into downtown Aurora. But here's the thing. Each victory becomes a stepping stone to the next. Our aspirations know no bounds. We all want our community to be a place where dreams can become a reality. Paramount supports the budding dancer or singer busting with talent but lacking the funds they need to pursue the training they desire. It provides thousands of free and reduced-priced tickets to children and families in our community. It supports new productions, accessibility initiatives, and education programs that strengthen the artistic and economic vitality of the entire region. The stage is set, and that's the role you can play in a successful theater. No less than any director or actor, you are an integral part of the art. As the curtain rises on a new chapter, we invite you to be a part of it. This is your moment. This is your theater. This is Paramount.
So that's Jim Cordy, our artistic director. He's very dramatic. He would like to be here with you more than me, I'm sure. So the city's always been a big partner of ours, and we've been very fortunate. We know that this is a big ask, that this, this is a lot of money. And there are different ways to do this. But if we want to continue doing what we've planned to do, which is open the Stope Island Theater and some of the other initiatives that we have, this is the short-term solution. We are working right now on a long, more medium and long-term solution. And like Chris had mentioned, very, he was very eloquent. He, we have, we'll come back to the city in the next few months and talk about what the, what the long-term plans and options are. We're investing right now into some different options and exploring different options. But this is where we're at. We're looking to open Stope Island Theater, summer of, this summer. If you saw kind of a glimpse of it there in the video that we created for today, it's going to be an immersive experience with our production of million-dollar quartet. It'll be very high-quality, very professional. It's, right now, it's about a $2.3 million investment on our part. So, and I just heard word that there's some additional things that we may have to do as well, but we'll see. We'll tackle those things. We're excited. We got a lot of great things coming, including a huge production this next holiday season with Disney. We're the regional premiere of Frozen. We'll be running that for 12 weeks this next holiday season. So it's very exciting. I'm really here for questions. I did speak at length at the Finance Committee meeting. And if there's anything I can assist with right now, I'd be happy to do that.
Alderman Smith.
So, this is a lot of money. It's something that has to be taken very seriously. But we all know that the Paramount, Rivers Edge, Copley Theater, and soon to be the new theater are the, what attracts people to come to our downtown. And this is what's going to help our city to continue to grow and continue to prosper and bring people down to spend money, not only in these, in these places, but food and beverage taxes, which is what brings it all together. So although it is a lot of money, I'm happy to see where it's coming from. I think it's a very good use of our money. I will be voting in favor of this.
That's great. Thank you.
And I would say consent before we go any further.
Quick question. Well, a couple. You had alluded to the use. I mean, my big question is what are we using $4.5 million for? You said 2.3 is going to the immersive theater?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
At least 2.3.
Okay, what else is, is this money going towards?
It goes to our overall budget. It's about a $30 million operation. And we're still around 10% down on our subscribers. We're at 41 million, or 41,000 subscribers prior to the pandemic. We were down all the way to 29,000, and we're now back up to 37,000. So at a $30 million budget, with our revenues 10% down and expenses anywhere from 10 to 20, sometimes 30% higher, wages, materials, it's really to fill the gap, the operating gap. There's different ways we could do that. We could eliminate programs. We could close a school. We could not do our Bold Series. We could not do River Edge Park. There are things to do that we could cut. Right now, we're trying to make sure we don't have to do that. And I think part of making sure that we continue on the path that we're going will be this longer-term planning that we have in the works.
And just to be clear, cutting all those programs you talked about, whether it be River Edge Park, whether it be the school, whether it be Copley, the Bold Series, it also cuts the number of people that come to see those shows.
Yeah.
And participate in the park. And it cuts foot traffic, cuts food and beverage sales. It cuts a lot of things that we've come to rely on for, you know, folks coming downtown, that half a million people that, just for the, just for the Broadway series alone that come, come to our downtown because of the Paramount, ACA, and everything you got going on. Correct?
That's correct, yeah.
May I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
So what are we doing to increase the subscribers? What's, what's happening for that?
Well, I think the single biggest thing we need to do is, is continue to focus on shows that people want to see. Populous shows, shows like Frozen, shows like, that we have lined up and we're about to announce for next year. Very exciting shows. We have two regional premieres in next year's season. It's the same with our Bold Series, too, trying to make sure that we, we make sure that we're picking shows that people want to see. But then it's also pricing them in a way that is more accessible. We do believe in volume. And I've spoke to this before, like, the more people that, that come downtown, the more that talk about downtown and how they had a good experience. And it's a domino effect, the, the activity, both with our programming and the restaurants. It just builds upon itself. So we're doing everything we can to help promote, but it's really, the season selection is the biggest thing that we can do. Our offer is the best in the nation as far as a buy-two-get-two-free. And, and if we can get someone to come see Charlie in the Chocolate Factory, and we call them and say, hey, you know, for another $35, you can become a subscriber, and, and get them in, and build a relationship with them. That's why we're having the success that we are. Whereas, the largest subscriber base in the nation was Walnut Street Theater, pre-pandemic at 54,000. They're under 19,000 right now. So the fact that we've gotten back almost where we were is, is, it's, it's remarkable. It's, it's not the norm. We are, we're bucking the trend in so many ways. And we wouldn't be able to do that without the city's support.
And, and I know some of the articles that you have sent us, the mayor's office, that we've sent around to the Alderman as well, show that many theaters, in Chicagoland specifically, are failing. And because of our partnership, not only are we not failing, you know, we're getting back to that point to where we had pre-pandemic. So now, as you are the number-one subscribed theater in the nation, we are, you know, we're trying to grow and continue to hold on, hold on to, hold on to that. So Alderman Lash, you have another question?
Yeah, I think that was, the mayor brought it up. It's mentioned, you know, numerous times that other theaters are closing.
Yeah.
And so I guess as I'm looking at this, and why I wanted to see how the 4.5 million's going to be spent, what percent is going to be on operational budget, et cetera, because you're saying that theaters are closing down, yet we're opening a new one, and that's where a large portion of this is going to go sustainably. Are we going to have that operational budget to maintain another theater? That's my big question.
It's a good question. Like, there's a lot of costs to get that theater open and the production running. And once it's running, we anticipate it will add to our profitability. It's not a large margin. It's only 98 seats. But that show should help bring down our reliance upon external funding.
And then, none of the money is being used for the expansion at River Edge. This is all going to be, so that'll be a whole separate.
That is correct.
Capital expenditure coming down the pipeline.
No, the, the, the monies are being used to help fund the programming that we're doing, the shows that we do specifically, our school of the arts, the classes that we offer, the scholarships that we offer. The programs that we have, that's what this funding is being used for.
Okay. I have two questions for the finance chair. If I may, just, have we done any analysis to look at how much food and beverage tax consumables are coming in? Because I know that a good percent of those consumable tax dollars are already being diverted to pay for other construction costs as, as we've used those. So I'm just curious what we're actually seeing with respect to return on investment.
Yeah, we, we don't have a way to granularly break down exactly what's attributable to the Paramount. But there are ratios and, and percentages and things that you can utilize to take a look at. And in the video, there was a graphic that sped by fairly quickly that said something around $230 million since about 2011 of economic impact.
That's citywide, that's correct.
Yes, it is, it is. So, but, but we do definitely see an uptick in activity at downtown restaurants, downtown, just downtown generally, on nights that the Paramount has shows and has performances and is, is lit, so to speak. And on other nights, or even similar nights, when they've been, when they've not had performances, when perhaps they may have in the past or something along those lines, the activity has dropped off significantly and precipitously. So we can't put an exact dollar figure on it, but I, but I do believe that it's fair to say that, you know, as we mentioned in, in some of the opening remarks, that the Paramount is one of the four main economic drivers of activity within the city.
Sure. And, you know, that's for the future, not unreasonable for us to attempt to try to measure, you know, if we can. Reality is, we do have a measure from year to year for those two years that Paramount was dark.
Yes.
We saw that we had no food and beverage in our, in our, in our downtown, based on, you know, the rules with the governor's office and not allowing the Paramount to be open. But when we saw that we were able to open even, you know, part of the way, you know, with a certain, a smaller percentage of, of ticket holders and showgoers, we saw immediately our food and beverage, you know, creep back, creep back up. So although that may not have been something that we have measured, you know, specifically in years past, that's, that's something we can definitely measure, especially as we continue to enter these partnerships and financially support ACA. I think that's unreasonable at all for us to look at that. You say you have one final question?
I just wanted to follow up one other bit of information, John, for you. There is some studies, there's some studies that have been done on, for every ticket sold to a nonprofit theater event, the supplemental impact on goods and services in the community. And ballpark, you know, it was around $29 for every ticket that is sold is spent on food, beverage, retail clothing, parking, travel, hotel, and those types of things, even cologne and babysitter and stuff like that. And about half of it, I remember, was about, was food and beverage itself. So that $29 number went down to about 17 or 19 or something like that for local spenders, and it was higher for non-local spenders. And we're drawing about 80, 86% of the people that are coming to our Broadway shows right now are not from Aurora. So we are pulling from other communities, and they are spending money when we're doing, when we're bringing them here.
Is, is that a, that study you mentioned, is that local study or national?
It's a national study that I, I had access to. It's, it's 10 years old, but the numbers would only be higher today. And I, it was done by a foundation of some sort. I don't know if the McCormick Foundation or something like that. I could try to find it. But I, I know that there's some information out there, and it ranges, the numbers that we had in our slide, the 30 million and the 230 million, those numbers specifically are from the Americans for the Arts. There's a calculator that you can use on their, on their website that generates that information.
Alderman Warman.
And if I may, Alderman, and Mr. Mayor, that is one of the trends that is starting, that is starting to emerge in the theater industry, is more partnerships with local dining establishments and turning it more into an, even more into an experience than it's been in the past, dinner and a show, working together with those local restaurateurs, those local entrepreneurs, to help drive attendance at both the restaurants and the areas around the theater, in addition to the theater itself. That is one of the trends that is kind of emerging post-COVID.
Alderman Warman.
So this is more from a personal standpoint. Not only does I feel that Paramount impacts restaurants downtown, I mean, I feel the impact at my location. You know, there clearly is an uptick when the show is in town, and we're, you know, five, 10 minutes from downtown. So clearly, we know when the show's in, in town because we see that impact. And it's a big impact, too. It's not, you know, a 2%, 3%. It's definitely, we pay attention to when the shows are debuting, you know, when, and the schedule that they have, because we staff accordingly for, because we see a huge impact as well, even though we're not in the downtown area. So I just want to add that for food for thought.
Remember when Gary Sines went to the home Alex?
Yes.
He did a pretty rare.
Yeah, I still have that picture. I'll show you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, we also can't forget about Kris Kringlemark, what that's brought to us this, over this past holiday.
It's also run by ACA.
Yes.
And, and the River Edge Park and pretty much everything they do all, all year. And it's only going to grow, as far as shows. But I don't think I need to tell you folks this. This is exactly what ARPA was created for, you know, to, to assist with our issues that we faced during COVID. One of our issues is our partner, you know, being hit very hard by. And we all know that if ACA fails our downtown, it's not going to be the downtown that we've all worked hard to get to the point, you know, with all the residential that's going to be coming, with all the restaurants that are in line to be coming. It's because ACA's there. So our support is, is paramount.
So if I could throw one more little tidbit on there, this is a lot of money.
Franco.
And I mentioned that the last meeting, finance meeting. But since then, I've done some research. And, and as we know what's happening with, with our entity, when entertainment venues and municipalities go down the tubes, the negative economic impact, sometimes you can't, you can't get it back. You can't get that back. So I almost take a look at this is, I don't think there's anything more significant than investing in the Paramount. I really do. It's, we talk about it's one of the four economic engines. Based on the, the problems that other cities have had, when they've lost control, when these have done, it's more than one of four. It is the driving force. Because we've seen, I've seen what other cities have gone through. So I don't know if there's anything more important than supporting this. Fortunately, we have those ARPA funds, but there's no better way to spend it with this, based on what's happening nationwide. So kudos to you guys for, for coming up with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
Thank you. Yeah, and to follow up with Alderman Lash, yeah, there, I believe that ACA does a great job in, in looking where our funds are going. Every time you go to a show, lo and behold, nine o'clock the next morning is that survey. You went to the show? Did you eat before? Did you eat after? I mean, they're always compiling information to better the experience for the next time. So I appreciate that. And when I'm downtown and I'm talking to my restaurateurs and the people in downtown, I always ask them, how are you doing on Tuesday? Because that's when the Paramount is dark. And that really tells you the life of your restaurant. Great, you're doing great on Saturday night. Your restaurant, you need to be doing great on Saturday night. How are you doing on Tuesday? And that kind of shows the correlation on how the Paramount impacts those other businesses. So I definitely appreciate that. I definitely echo what the mayor said on, it was the reason the federal government created ARPA. This is it. And this is one of our engine cogs that we need to help. So kudos to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee.
All of them. This one's going to go on, the consent, all right?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to put it on unfinished if that's possible. I'd like to have a further conversation. I, I just would like, I mean, to, to all the points, ARPA's temporary funding, we're creating another theater. I just want to know that the operational funds are going to be there.
And, and I understand that, and it's your prerogative to do that. But it's like, come on, John. This is like, this come on, John. This is like, this is the heart of our city we're talking about, just because you don't have enough information? What more information do you need? I mean, what they, was provided in our legislature, what they've provided there, what we've all talked about. You know, again, it's your prerogative to do what you're doing. It's going to pass anyways, because you'll only be the one voting against it. But this is just taking it a little bit too far for me, taking it a little bit too far. This is the heart of our city. So that's, just had to say that.
Aldermen have the right to ask questions in this forum and to follow up the next week. So that will always be the case.
That's it.
Mr. Alexandria.
I just wanted to add to Alderman Lash's point. We are not just plugging in four and a half million without a lot of work between Erica, who's the CFO, Tim's team, our team. And as Tim mentioned, we, and we said this at finance, too, this is step one to, to, actually, this is step two, because last year, or two years ago, we gave you the first tranche of support. This is the next tranche. And then, we have looked at a pro forma as far into the future as five years of projections, with all the venues being fully built out, fully operational. And to Alderman Bug's point, we are looking at close to 1,000, when this is all built out, we'll have over 1,000 performances a year. So the chances, and, and the pro forma shows that as these shows will be on, you know, there's only 365 days to the year, right? So 1,000 performances is going to continue to drive patrons, 86% of which come from the outside with disposable income. We're going to do a much better job of capturing their food, their beverage, and perhaps hotels. I mean, we see people at River Edge Park who stay at hotels the night before for shows. So it's not just, I guess we're a lot more advanced than we were a couple of years ago when things were more uncertain in the industry. And kudos to our teams to really drill down the numbers. So we're very, very confident of this short-term and long-term plan.
All right, we'll put this on unfinished, so y'all are going to ask some questions, because then we're not paying attention in Aurora and seeing how well AKA's doing and what he's doing for our downtown. Go ahead. Was that, was that all for finance?
That concludes the finance report. Thank you.
All right, let's go on to Chairman Seville. Can you give the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, the PHSNT committee did not have a meeting December because there's no items to consider. And that's reported from our committee.
Thank you kindly, sir. Chairwoman Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We met on December 18. The first item in the agenda is 23-0991, a resolution authorizing the award of contract for the 2024 Citywide Sanitary Source CIPP Lightning Project to Higher Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,148,478.0.
Consent. No objections. Simon Gongson.
23-0994, a resolution authorizing the Director of Pricing to enter an agreement with Donahue Services LLC, 13011 Grand Road, LeMont, Illinois, 60439, in the amount of $56,050 for building demolition and 14th South LaSalle Street.
Consent. No objection. Simon Gongson.
23-1013, a resolution authorizing the purchase of shore maintenance project from Rangers, Inc., to source well for $109,819.0.
No objections. Simon Gongson.
23-1020, a resolution authorizing the Director of Pricing to execute a professional service agreement with Walker Consulting in the amount of $93,470 for a downtown parking study.
Consent.
I do have a, kind of a question and a comment, especially with what we heard tonight about, you know, 1,000 shows, you know, a year coming to us. I think parking is very important. I do frequent some folks, you know, some establishments along Broadway. Those, those folks are concerned about, about parking. So I think this is a great study that we're doing. And the one other thing that I said in committee that, that I'd like us to look at maybe naming some of these parking lots that have some sort of geographic ties, so folks can find them, so that, so that when a restaurateur tells somebody, go park on the New York, New York street lot, you know, there's a little, it's a little easier than, than a number or a letter. So I hope that, and I'm glad we're doing this, but I hope we can maybe address that with this study.
I agree. Because I don't know what lot Z is. We can talk to it about it all the time. That's a good point.
It's next to lot Y.
Any other questions? All right. No objections. Simon Gongson.
Next item is 23-1022, a resolution authorizing the Director of Pricing to adopt unit price for the purchase of sensors, water meters.
Consent.
No objections. Simon Gongson.
They conclude the meeting, Mayor.
All right, that concludes the committee. So Chairman Worman, can you give the Rules, Administration, and Procedures Committee report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules, Administration, and Procedures Committee was scheduled to meet on December 19, 2023. No items were brought before committee, therefore it was canceled.
All right, we will, all right, that concludes that. I see council has got up and gone to that portion of the, of the council chambers. Is there something you want before we go on to something?
This item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there's another item?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Held item.
Oh, held item from committee of the whole. Madam Kirk, can you read the, read that item?
22-0211, an ordinance creating section 2-65 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to Aldermanic Initiative Funds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Corporation Council, Rick Veenster here. For those of you who remember, last year, we were discussing the creation of a new section of the city code to address the Aldermanic Initiative program. We had a number of conversations and meetings in the Rules, Administration, Procedures Committee extending through last November into early December. The item came as a initial look to COW late last year. We held and deferred further action on it to allow the members of the city council to have a little bit additional time to take a look at it, and also potentially take advantage of what has thus far been a light agenda at the COW meeting, to kind of go through some of the details of it, and kind of talk a little bit about it in a little greater detail than might have been possible last month. So, last month, if you recall, I did a presentation that covered most of the details of this proposed ordinance. What I'm going to do for this meeting, if it's okay with the committee, is kind of go through some of the frequently asked questions and some of the highlights of the ordinance, to kind of cover some of the territory where I think there still may be some discussion points that the committee may wish to delve into. And also, I've proposed an amendment to the language that the committee may wish to consider as well, that is part of the legislature file. So essentially, what I'd like to talk about first is some of the frequently asked questions. I want to explain the concept of the $3,000 threshold which appears in the ordinance, address how grants are going to be handled, and in particular, scholarships as a form of grants, and then what specifically alderpersons would not be able to spend ward funds under, on, under the text of this ordinance. So first, let's address the $3,000 threshold question. What the $3,000 threshold is, it's actually a limitation on what is an automatic expenditure in 265, excuse me, that's C2 of the ordinance. Effectively, what paragraph C2C does is it lists the types of things which an alderman may use their ward funds for that's not expressly called out, that, without having to go to the wrap committee. So essentially, anything that appears in that paragraph is something that an alderman can effectively use as of right, assuming that all the conditions are set forward. So when you look at subsection three, an alderman has the ability, provided that they have funds available, to engage in any sort of programming activities, including community meetings, shredding, recycling, or neighborhood cleanup events, cultural educational events. So with respect to what's highlighted in green, an alderman has the ability, provided that they have funds available, to use those funds for that purpose without having to go to the wrap committee. What's in yellow is a slight exclusion to that. And it essentially says that honorarium speaking fees, lodging, travel, or entertainment expenses in an aggregate amount exceeding $3,000 for a particular event would need to go through wrap committee. So for example, if somebody was doing a community cleanup day, all the expenses associated with the community cleanup day would be something that the alderman can authorize as of right under the ordinance. What they would need to come to wrap committee would be in the event that there was entertainment at that event that exceeded a total cost of $3,000. So the full cost of the event, other than the entertainment, can be covered by the alderman at the alderman's discretion, provided that there are funds available.
Even if that amount is over 3,000?
Even if that amount is over 3,000. If, however, the alderman wished to hire a DJ, some entertainment, a speaker, whatever, and the aggregate amount associated with the entertainment portion of that event exceeded 3,000, that would be what would have to come to the wrap committee. So not the event itself, just that component of the event. And if, for whatever reason, the wrap committee said, that seems to be a larger amount than we think is appropriate, the event can still go on, just the entertainment portion would be curtailed to the $3,000 threshold. So essentially, it says, go ahead and have the event, but it's the entertainment portion, or the honorarium portion, travel related to that, lodging related to that, that's what the $3,000 cap applies to, and not the event itself. So again, to kind of recap again, up to $3,000 without further review for all expenses related to honorarium for any individual program. And then, that wrap approval is only required for $3,000 for that single event. So if you had some, if you had two events with $2,000 of these types of expenditures, you still wouldn't need to go to wrap. It's if you had $3,001 with a single event, that's where you would need to go to wrap to get that approval. Does anybody have any questions about that point?
Questions? Continue.
Okay. So what about scholarships and competitive grants? As initially drafted, the ordinance did not permit any concept of scholarships being able to be authorized with ward funds. This was consistent with limitations that state law has with respect to campaign funding. It's similar to procedures which the General Assembly enacted years ago to eliminate the General Assembly Scholarship Program. It just wasn't going to be a use of the ward funds unless the alderman contributed to effectively an educational foundation or something like that, that took the alderman's discretion away as far as who was specifically receiving the scholarship fund. You could still fund a scholarship, you could still have a scholarship for whichever ward. It was just to limit the ability of that funds going directly to a recipient. The way the wrap committee decided that they wished to deal with that was to change the process and recognize scholarships as really more of a competitive grant, not significantly different than a ward beautification or a neighborhood beautification project, or a facade improvement project. And under the language that was adopted by the wrap committee, if an older person wishes to have a scholarship program, they could submit an application for that scholarship program that basically sets forth the different conditions, the selection criteria, who would be eligible for it, who would not be eligible for it, and submit that to the wrap committee for its review. Now, conceptually, I think there are two ways that that might actually play itself out. You might have an individual alderman who has something that they've done in the past that they wish to continue doing, reducing that, that process to writing and submitting that to the wrap committee for approval. The wrap committee could also look at it, handling it a different way, having a generalized template that would allow any alderman who follows that template to have a scholarship program and fund it in that particular way. So that's at least two different ways that scholarships can be handled going forward. But like any other competitive grant, the process would go through the wrap committee for its approval, to at least set up the program. Once the program is set up, then the discretion then is within that program. And it would not, the individual wards would not need to be approved by the wrap committee.
I do have a question in this, this portion, not necessarily a question, just a comment. We do have a grant, obviously, you know, a grant program in place, and those of us who have grants, bring them forward and get them voted on each and every year. So I believe we should do the same thing for the scholarship, let the wrap committee put together a template, like you said, and for our scholarships. What I disagree with what you said is that you said that grants are much like, excuse me, that scholarships are much like grants. I get the concept of them written like grants, but they're not, because scholarships are given to individual people. Grants are typically for a very large number of people, community. It's a beautification. It's affecting a lot of people.
But you are correct. Although, with respect to a beautification grant, it would potentially be awarded to an individual business or an individual homeowner who's making an investment. So in as much, in as much to your point, you know, there's a neighborhood benefit to it as opposed to an individual benefit, it's still, at the end of the day, awarded to an individual.
And this is what's interesting, because you said homeowners, and that's why this conversation is really helpful, because I don't, my grant doesn't say anything about individual homeowners. So I think it's something that if maybe other people's grants do. So I think these conversations are good to have.
Continue.
Are there any questions on competitive grants and scholarships?
I have a question. I think, I don't know how you will figure out this, but the needs are different in every ward. In a second ward committee, they, all the time, since 18 years I've here, they decide the ward funds, they have to be separate for a scholarship. So in this point, now you're saying they can be like a grant. I don't think the university want to apply for a grant, because the check going to the university of the student. So I don't know how they want to work with this.
Aldermen, it wouldn't be a great, the, it would, it would be more of the form of the scholarship program, where it's a competitive scholarship that would be awarded, and what would be submitted would effectively be, here's the process by which a scholarship is going to be awarded. So it wouldn't be the university competing or the recipient, because that would be too difficult. You'd never know which college the particular winning student would be going to. But what it would do is, it would set the process for, here's, here's the selection criteria, who's on the committee, here are the qualifications, here are things that are not qualified, here's the amount of the scholarship, things of that nature.
But it doesn't take away from Alderman Garza, who may be one of a few aldermen that has a work committee, for that work committee to still be involved in making the decisions, to help her decide which student is going to apply and go through wrap. So you still do the exact same thing you've always done. It's just that there's a next step, and that's just to go to wrap, so they can approve.
Exactly. And aldermen, like, for example, a document that you prepared outlining the ward two scholarship program as it currently exists, with very few changes, if any at all, that would be something you could be submitted to the wrap committee.
So you're talking about, what is the amount on the scholarship we have to come to wrap?
Whatever, whatever budget, whatever budget.
What is the scholarship?
If you're going to say it's going to be a $1,000 scholarship, then the program itself is set up and approved by the wrap committee. And then, the scholarship in whatever amount is authorized gets awarded by the commit, gets awarded by the selection committee or whichever mechanism is part of that process, not by the wrap committee.
I mean, not much to change other than oversight?
Exactly, exactly.
Alderman Lash.
Who's going to be responsible for drafting the template that Alderwoman Smith mentioned? And I understand what you're saying. There's a template that we have for capital programs within each ward. This is going to be a template for, say, a scholarship for those alderpeople that have them. Who drafts that template?
The law department would work with the wrap committee in developing a template, if the wrap committee wished to have a set template. If an individual alderman wanted to, for lack of a better way of putting it, go outside the box and kind of come up with their own customized program, law department's willing to assist as well. Obviously, we prefer standardization, but as long as it's within the four corners of the, the ordinance as it's drafted, we're happy to help out.
Any other questions? Continue.
All right. Next slide, in very, very small font, talks about expenditures which are prohibited. This is all set forth in the ordinance, which all of you have on your iPads, but for the Cliff Notes version, these are the expenditures that are prohibited. Any expenditures that exceed the amount of money that you happen to have at any given time. Prohibited expenditures for political contributions, for professional or consulting services, except when required as part of an authorized public improvement process. For example, if you're going to be doing some sort of a neighborhood infrastructure process, and there were some engineering costs associated with it, those funds could be used to go to the engineering costs that directly associated with it. For billboards, posters, or other permanent or semi-permanent signs for advertising, the featuring a name, title, likeness of the alderperson. This has an exception for ex-
This has an exception, for example, if you're going to contribute to a community event or something like that, and maybe there's a placemat that has the alderman's name on it saying, "Contributed by the X Ward Fund." That would be an exception that's built into this.
Isn't there an exception for when aldermen send out newsletters?
This is not, this would not be, this is not an advertisement, that's, would be defined as constituent communications, which is separately called out as being an authorized expenditure.
Correct.
For payments to a family member of the alderperson, to an entity owned by an alderperson which the alderperson or a family member has a direct or indirect financial interest, that's effectively a prohibited interest in contracts anyway. So, by putting it in here, it makes it a little bit clearer that that's not permitted. For membership and/or club dues charged by organizations, clubs or facilities that are primarily engaged in providing health, exercise, or recreational services, thus you can't use your ward funds to purchase a country club membership, for example. For non-capital expenditures in excess of one-third of an alderperson's annual budget in an election year. So, for example, if you are running for election and you wish to spend the non-capital funds, you are only limited to spending a third of your total annual allotment before the election. So, at any point before the election.
Year out?
Just, just in that calendar year. So, the purpose of that is, in a situation where an alderman may not be seeking reelection, where an alderman may be unelected by the constituents, the successor alderman still has two-thirds of that year's budget to use at their discretion for the non-capital expenditures. So...
You said two different things, brother. So, the one, one, you said, all right, so if an alderman is unelected, they can only spend a third of that, of their ward funds, so that leaves money for the next alderman that comes in.
Correct.
And in that calendar year, up to that election, they can't spend, they can only spend a third.
Correct.
So, that's, all right.
So, you're, no matter what happens, come the beginning of May, there should be still two-thirds of that allocation allowed, either for that alderman to use as they continue their term, having been reelected, or for the successor alderman to use at their discretion for the remainder of that year. So, again, it's a protection against, one, overusing that funds for whatever purposes, and, two, making sure that the alderman who comes in afterwards still has money available.
Alderman Franco.
I might be nitpicking on this, but you set up to the election, elections in April, you get, you lose the election, you get, new guy comes in in May. Are we counting that month of April that he still can't, because the election's over? Now, I'm like, all right, I can spend money, because I'm just, it's all you.
But remember, remembering the realities of the situation with early voting and with mail-in ballots, the certification comes very, very, very late in April, and the new aldermen are seated by the second, by the second week in May. So, you're talking about a very short window.
I just, I just didn't know that, little window that was going to be a problem.
It's not quite nearly as large a window as it had been, and particularly, we've seen some very close elections at all levels in the city and elsewhere.
Alderman Lesch.
Just a quick question or recommendation. To me, it seems like having blackout dates, this is how the state handles it, that you can't use tax dollars for communications in a certain period before an election. I can see having events and so forth, but I would say that that might be a better way to block out the influence. It might also influence some regularly scheduled events. And I guess, just for consideration, I can see 50%. I mean, I think Alderman Jenkins spent about 50% of his ward funds, I had no problem with that picking up, because it, by May, it is half the year is, is over with. So, just for consideration, if anybody wants to weigh in.
No, that's, that's, that's a good observation. This applies to all non-capital expenditures. It could also, we could also have a different prohibition against use of ward funds for mailers or other kind of constituent communications, that may become a little bit more difficult. I know when we had initially discussed this internally back in 2022, part of the concern was an alderman is still an alderman up until the last day of their holding office, and I think this was the, how we kind of figured out the one-third was, okay, we understand that, but this is the balance. But again, this is a matter of legislative discretion, and the COW can make whatever amendments it wishes to forward onto the city council.
Mayor, thank you. Just clarification, when you, when you say one-third for the annual budget, you're talking about January 1st to May, right? You're not talking of that election year, you're not talking about the whole previous year as well?
You're talking about the, for the, for that portion of the calendar year prior to the end of the alderman's present term.
Money they receive that year, which is $75,000?
Yes.
One-third of that? What if they got money in the bank?
Well, it's, it's a third of the non-capital expenditures.
Gotcha.
Which is the...
So, the election, for example, is, say theoretically, is coming up right now in April, right?
Yep.
As of now, today's date or yesterday's date, when the one-third takes effect.
You could spend, you could spend a third of your non-capital funds.
Not previous year.
Not previous years.
Okay, I just want, that's the clarification I was looking for.
So, we're looking at $8,000-ish?
Depending on what's, yeah.
If the, if the numbers stay the same.
I, I was told there'd be no math, but that sounds about right.
Well, I'm the finance guy, that's all I think I know.
What about the capital funds? You said the...
Capital funds are not affected by this limitation.
So, if I can finish up on my thought, where I'm going with it, what if you have a program that's already approved by RAP to go towards the end of your term? Which I've had, and I have, I have had.
The way you would address it is, you would at least have an, you, you would have an initial limitation in it that year that you're running for election, and only to that third. Now, if you're reelected, or if you have no opposition, then it's not an issue. But if there is, so long as there's a candidate who's running against you, you would be limited to run, to expect one-third of your total non-capital funds.
So, the RAP Committee can approve it, of a program to the end of the term?
Yep.
But if you have an opponent, this ordinance would take into effect this line item and say, okay, those last four months or five months, only a third of it can be attributed out of the ward funds.
Exactly. And even with, even without this limitation, when it comes to ward funds and it comes to expenditures like that, I don't know that there's a desire to bind future alderpersons to what the predecessor alderman did. So, as those go to RAP, it would be our recommendation that the grant programs are all either conditional or would terminate at the conclusion of the alderman's present term of office.
Right, but they don't have to worry about working on the dates, they can say to the end of the term, but this will be a back, backroom caveat, it's already been approved.
Exactly.
That's what I wanted to get at.
Any other questions? Alderman Lesch.
I want to go to number four.
Sure.
For professional or consultative services, except when required as part of the authorized public improvement project.
Yes.
I'll just say that my thoughts are, I've thought through how I would potentially be using these. I would like to see this move to something that could be used, should the RAP Committee approve it. I'm fine with having some level of scrutiny on it, but to prohibit it out of hand, I think, is, is not necessarily good. I don't, I understand a lot of the rationale behind some of these exclusions and agree with them. But I was thinking that if, hypothetically, if I was to, say, want to hire some professional service to help people find money to put solar panels on their...
Okay.
Houses or businesses or whatever, that would be excluded based on this, and, you know, I have no problem having a program that goes through that. And then, the second thing is, on the same page of the, the previous, not on the exclusions, it should have been discussed in the previous one.
Okay.
Which is the $3,000 and the 60-day requirement. I'm looking at the 60 days, and just another hypothetical, if, let's say, continuing Shakita Hartburn's is back-to-school event, and there was an honorarium for a motivational speaker at that event that was $4,000, requiring the alderman to wait 60 days, I think is a little excessive, and if we could strike the 60 days, I would, I would be in favor of that requirement. We meet every two weeks.
Part of the reason that we did the 60 days was knowing that there were agenda deadlines, even with RAP meeting every two weeks, there's still a lead time in terms of open meetings, act compliance, making sure that everything gets into the system. If the committee wished to reduce that, I think that would be something that would not be overly problematic, where I would think that there would be an issue, and where the reason that there are those deadlines in there is, we have seen at times that, you know, at the last minute, as things, things become last minute, last minute, all the time, and it becomes very difficult to make sure that if you have 12 last-minute requests all coming in in the last, at the last minute, it's very hard to address, and we didn't want to create a situation where you would have some requests moving through and some not, and trying to keep everything as balanced as possible. If we wanted to reduce that time, we could do it. I don't know that I would eliminate, recommend eliminating it completely, but it's certainly within the committee's discretion.
Don't...
Alderman Franco.
We have an expedited request section in here, too. Would that encompass a situation where we, we kind of got a bind? I mean, it seems like that would be for...
The expedited request is really more for those things which are available under the ordinance that don't require RAP Committee approval. That's why it's only a 14-day clock, because that's a little bit easier to adjust for. The 60-day clock we were looking at is having that, because you want to make sure that if it's going to have to go through the RAP Committee, you do have all those procedural things. But the 14-day expedited request is really for things that don't have to go to RAP.
Alderman Bade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rick, for the fifth point, for billboard posters or other permanent or semi-permanent signs, for the ward events, like back-to-school event, the semi-permanent sign should be okay?
That would be fine, because that's part of, that's part of your event that you're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, the last, the last point was for any expenditures not having a primary public purpose, or is it prohibited by law or ordinance? The proposed ordinance defines public purpose as being a purpose approved or authorized by law or ordinance that has as its primary objective the promotion of public health, safety, welfare, moral security, prosperity, contentment, general welfare of the city residents. So, that's the nexus for really the expenditure of any public funds. So, let's talk about the one amendment that's drafted right now, that's in your legislature. It's Proposed Amendment 1. It does really two sets of things. The first is, it provides the RAP Committee a little bit of, now, actually, provides the RAP Committee with authority to interpret the ordinance and effectively resolve any disputes. Part of the issues that, you know, we kind of talked a little bit during the RAP Committee, this was something that was always something that I had kind of suggested but didn't include in the initial draft, was that there are times where staff may look at something in an ordinance and come to a conclusion and give an answer, and then, without knowing it, a different alderman has asked a different staffer a similar question and gotten an opposite answer. So, the, the purpose of having this here is to provide consistency, because we don't want to necessarily be in a situation where one alderman feels they got a different answer because they asked a question, or because they asked a different staffer, and one said yes, and one said no. I don't want to use the analogy, if mom says yes, then ask dad, but that's the type of thing that we want to avoid having, where you have the differing opinions, and having the RAP Committee make that call, I think, is a better solution, because then all the aldermen know how that particular question has been resolved, and has guidance and some transparency as to what might be the proper way, or what the ordinance requires or doesn't require going forward. So, it does kind of put, the intent is to put everybody on effectively a level playing field when it comes to questions of interpretation or some gray areas that exist in the ordinance. It also revises Section 265 E910 to account for one of the changes that, I believe it was Alderman Smith had made during the RAP Committee, that talks about the funds that were appropriated for prior years. This kind of makes some conforming changes, doesn't change anything substantively, but the other aspect of it is, because we are now in fiscal year 2024, the references to fiscal year 2023 didn't make any sense, so that, that cleans that up and makes it a little bit more consistent.
Questions? Alderman, Alderman Bade, then Alderman, Mr. Akos.
So, Rick, how will we handle the remaining funds from 2024 and forward?
What would happen is, if this ordinance is enacted, the first thing that would happen is that the ward funds that you just appropriated as a result of this budget would be split two-thirds, one-third. The ward aldermen would each get an allocation of the, based on that, would get an allocation. The alderman-at-large would not get a, would not get a infrastructure appropriation, but you would partition what is now a shared account between the two aldermen-at-large, and you would then, going forward, have each having an equal amount of non-capital funds, which all of you would have as well. So, effectively, what would happen is, for this year, for the ward alderman, it would be two-thirds, one-third, kind of the way that the rule of thumb has existed for the last 14 years. Going forward, if you encumber funds for capital purposes for 2024, you can carry those over as a ward alderman. If it's something that could be, if you begin something this year for a non-capital fund, a project, and you've already started it, and it's something that qualifies for the non-capital funds, you can carry over that limited portion, just to make sure that it carries into next year. But going forward, those funds, if they're not encumbered, or if they're not carried over, would just return to the city's treasury. So, the obligation for these new funds appropriated this year and going forward is for the ward alderman to identify specifically what capital projects they want to be using, and what for.
How many years can they save for capital projects?
At this point, as a result of Alderman Smith's amendment, there is no cap on it. We would encourage the aldermen to identify those projects as expeditiously as possible, but the ordinance does not create any sort of forfeiture or reversion for previous funds, which I believe most of the wards still have.
And how many years can they save for non-capital projects that may be a little bit more expensive then?
For, for non-capital, there's no carryover. The only thing that you, there's no, you can only carry over things which are essentially in progress. So, if you have something that you've already committed for like an event, first week of January or something like that, then you can use last year's funds for that. But that's a very limited, essentially, it would be the same standard that any department would be held to in terms of carrying over budget expenses from the previous year. And it's very limited.
Is that something you all decided?
Well, so, I just want to put, I like to put numbers on this, so, give, example, we're in 2025 now, because 2024 is the same. 2025, $75,000 still coming, one-third is non-capital. I spend $23,000. 2026 comes around, I lose $2,000, basically.
Correct.
It doesn't go into capital, it's just gone.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure everybody kind of knows the black and whites of that, because that's important to know, so, you know, we'll do what we need to do with that, but I just want to spell...
Unless there was a basis to carry it over, consistent with any other department.
Right.
And what happens?
Mr. Mayor? Alderman Seville?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm looking for some clarification as to what was just explained between Alderman Franco and Rick Minster, and I had a couple of questions about clarifications as well. So, if you're saving for a long-term project, which, as you know, from the last few alderman's quarters, that I did, it took a few years to save up for it. So, I spent over $300,000, maybe more, I think, I have to look at my records, on capital projects. In order to be able to do that, I had to save many, many years to do that. Are you saying there's a cap now in terms of my expenditures?
No, Alderman, it's essentially, we want to reward that type of planning, because you saved over a number of years, you identified the project that you were going to be doing, and you worked towards implementing that, whether it was a park or something along those lines. You identified and very, were very clear in making sure that everybody knew, and you had set aside those funds for that purpose. That's what we would like to, that would be the model we'd like to follow, and provided that the aldermen are doing that with funds appropriated this year and going forward, then they can carry over those capital funds.
But not, not... And where do we give that information to in order to continue carrying it over over a number of years? Should we give this to the committee or the finance department?
We would handle this through the alderman's office as well as the finance department.
Okay. And then, for example, carrying over capital only, does that, for example, if I decide, or any ward alderman decides to spend the entire non-capital for that year, and save up, all the capital goes in the next year, does that automatically go into the capital for next year? Because you're saving up, it's not supposed for capital, non-capital, is it?
It, it does not. What, the way to handle that situation would be, if you know that you have non-capital funds in your account, say by the middle of November, you would complete a budget transfer request and move the non-capital funds into the capital funds, and then, basically, identify those for a particular project, and that would be your... and that would be your way of carrying over that, the non-capital funds, and using them for a different purpose going forward.
And if I'm carrying just capital to capital when you're next, I don't need anybody's permission to do that, or just designated?
Correct. To move funds from a, from the non-capital to the capital account, you require nothing more than filling out a form. To convert capital to non-capital, that would go to the finance committee.
Capital, non-capital, okay. And then if I want to spend more than two-thirds on capital in any given year, that's, that's okay?
That would be.
Out of the $75,000 that we currently receive, if I want to spend more than two-thirds on capital, that's okay?
That would be fine. Now, remember also that going forward, the two-thirds, one-third may not be the, the rule. You're going to have a separate allocation for capital and a separate allocation for non-capital. And if you wish to do more capital work, that's where you would fill out the budget transfer request, and that would move money from one pot into the other pot. Right, because right now, the two-thirds, one-third is very difficult to kind of see, unless you're going to say hard, fast, 25-50 with the $75,000 you're getting right now. And it may be that the city council wishes to increase these funds in future years or even this year, and we didn't put numbers or percentages in the, in the ordinance for that purpose.
So the reality is, if the alderman just fill out paperwork to make everything capital, once you get to the end of the year and have non-capital left, you never actually have to give any money back.
Just to be accountable.
Right, so, Alderman Smith.
Yeah, so, kind of a two-part question for me. We, you're talking about transferring capital to non-capital. And there's a lot of aldermen that have a lot of money in capital and not so much in non-capital. Is this ordinance covering the fact that if someone wants to move money, transfer, a budget transfer from their capital to the non-capital, they need to come to the RAP?
Finance, finance committee.
But, okay, that's my question. It's already been an approved budget line. Why would they have to come to finance? They should have to come to RAP. And I could be wrong on that.
Because it's a budget line item for capital. So if they wish to move it to non-capital, then they would have to go to, they would have to go to the finance committee for that approval.
Okay.
It, we didn't put in a, we didn't put in a approval requirement to move non-capital to capital, because we, you know, thought that that would be the less common and probably the more in keeping with the original intent of the program, which was ward beautification improvements.
And it appears there's no limit to the amount of transfers an alderman can do to go from capital to non-capital? That's, is, is that per their discretion?
It's per, to move from capital to non-capital would be the discretion of the finance committee.
Okay.
And.
But the alderman has to come to the finance committee?
Correct. And explain, and explain what they were doing and why.
Because ultimately, you should be spending some of that money on your, your capital money, on your infrastructure.
Correct. And that's, the capital funds are what have accumulated over the years, not the non-capital.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Lash.
Just to follow up a little bit on what Alderman Seville was saying. So this is about encumbrance and rollovers, basically?
Yes.
Page 10, number 7, encumbrance of the capital funds for multi-year projects, whenever the ward alderperson says with concurrence of the Director of Public Works. And then you go on to talk about the City Treasurer. So do you need the Public Works Department and the Treasurer to sign off on that?
Let me take a quick look, so I got.
That's only.
So you've got here.
That's almost your return of your money.
Reports, and then the other seven minutes, I say Treasurer.
I, I think.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. The previous version of the ordinance had language that involved the encumbrance of, for multi-year proj, so, okay. You are correct, Alderman Lash, with respect to encumbering for multi-year projects, you do let the Director of Public Works as well, know as well as that you're going to be using that for a particular purpose. It doesn't require. And I think probably the, the term that probably needs to come out is concurrence of the Director of Public Works.
What line do you add on page 10?
There's two different versions. It's the first, if you look at the, the first complete sentence in paragraph 7 of sub-paragraph D.
So it's not concurrence as much as notice, because?
Yeah.
Public Works has to actually do the work. But it's just a matter of, you know, giving them notice and making sure that you can get in the queue with them.
So for clarity, then, are you saying that?
When I checked.
It's on page 11, through those.
Go ahead, questions?
So for clarity, then, are you saying that we're going to strike Director of Public concurrence from Director of Public Works?
Concurrence or to notice, whatever.
Concurrence with notice, just put notice in there.
Yeah. Let's, you know, Mr. Mayor, if, if there are no further questions on this, I, I think maybe the first step would be to consider, to entertain a motion to approve, well, actually, no, entertain a motion to approve Amendment One, which is the RAP Committee review and discretion, and then changing the number, changing 2024, 2023 to 2024. Deal with that potential amendment.
So I need a motion to second to amend? So the motion by Alderman Franco, second of Alderman Smith, are any questions on what we're doing?
That's Amendment One.
Right.
Mayor, can we have that, that motion read, placed by our legal advisor?
What is the motion?
Motion one.
The, the motion is to change the proposal by adopting Amendment One.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Bug?
Yeah, just clean up. What we were just talking about. So how, you know, to go back to how it really works. So we put in here, notice.
Well, we're not at that point yet. We're about to get to there a second. Once, once we adopt what, go ahead. We'll tell them how.
What we're looking to do at, at this, for this step here, is to take Amendment One and add it to the proposal from November 22nd. Once that's done, I will engross it and we'll have that changed. If there's any other changes, like, for example, Alderman Lash has suggested, then we can add that. And then by the time we're at city council next week, we'll have a document that has all the changes engrossed and ready for the council's action, whichever direction it wishes to go.
So right now, it's just a vote to adopt Amendment One?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Pass.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Mormon.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. Now go on to the next portion of.
At this point, if, I can actually head back to my chair, but if at this point, if there's any other discussion.
I do have it, but one more question. Is it clearly stated in here, and I've read this thing so many times in every version of it, that the RAP Committee will be moving forward with putting together a scholarship template? And I know you said that those who do scholarships can do their own template. But is that written in here? Are we, are we going to adopt something? If so many aldermen are doing scholarships, there should be some type of template in place.
Amendment One talks to, speaks to the authority of the RAP Committee to do that. And if there was that desire to do the scholarships, certainly, we can begin putting something together that sets that general framework up.
Thank you.
Now, let's talk about the amendments that are going to be made.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
All right, hold on one second. We'll come back to that question. Is it, is it about the amendment to change?
Not about the amendment.
So let's talk about that for a second, then we'll come to Alderman Bade. So.
Alderman Lash, did you want to make an amendment to change concurrence to notice?
I'd like to, do you want me to read the line number, page number?
I think it's the second sentence of paragraph 7 in. Make a motion.
Current one is page 11.
I'll reference number 7 to amend and change the word concurrence to the word notice with respect to the Director of Public Works.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
So an emotion and a second by Alderman Seville. Questions, Alderman Bug?
Yeah, I would ask the gentleman if we could do a friendly amendment on top of that. It should not be the Director of Public Works. It should be the Department of Public Works, because we know that Director of Public Works, Ken Schroel, he does not handle these things. He's doing other things. This is always handled by Mr. Brower, Mr. Wade. That is their job, so.
That makes it easier. Go ahead.
Alderman, I, I would actually encourage the, the committee to remain with the language. Wherever possible, we've tried to identify a single actor as the one responsible for doing something. There is a general language in the city code that specifies that whenever an individual is authorized to do something, it also includes their ability to delegate it. So in this particular situation, Ken, as a department head, would direct, Jason, as the assistant department head, to handle that matter. But it would still be the Director of Public Works who's prep where that request should probably sit. That would be my recommendation. The committee may agree otherwise.
Alderman Bug?
It's just, it's just not the way it's been handled the last 15 years.
So. It doesn't sound, I agree, it doesn't sound practical. And it just, go ahead.
Just for a point of clarification, all we're doing is notifying the department or the director. They are not approving or disapproving, correct?
That is correct.
So the issue is friendly amendment that Alderman Bug just pointed out to say the department, because it's practical that you're not going to give Ken notice for everything that goes on in every ward. But you talk to the individuals that are actually going to be doing the work. So for practical purposes, Alderman Bug wants to change it from the Director of Public Works to the Department of Public Works.
Does it need a second?
Uh, not as friendly amendment. Are you, are you agree with that or no?
I'm okay with the language if the council agrees.
All right.
I would be opposed.
I got, I got some questions about that. If we have it, if the language says the Director of Public Works is automatically going to give it to a designee, why wouldn't we go with that? Number two, why don't we just put in the words Director of Public Works or his designee? I don't know why, I mean, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, if it's there, why don't we use it?
The, the reason we don't put or is designee, at least in the ordinances that I've been drafting within the last several years is because there's general language in the general sections of the Code of Ordinances that say that authority is, that the delegation is understood. That's why, that's why I didn't put or designee. The reason I didn't put department is because it's generally better practice. The department doesn't necessarily get noticed. It's an individual in the department who would get noticed. But again, when I drafted it, it was more consent, so here, department is not necessarily.
Our, so our ordinance inherently says that a department head can't have a designee, because it's in there, so we don't have to keep readdressing it over and over and over again. Is that what you're telling me?
The language or designee is understood.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's real no need to, based on the language being understood in our ordinance, there's no need to, to do just the general department versus director. So do you withdraw that, based off of the conversation, Alderman Bug, that friendly amendment?
Let's just talk it through 30 seconds here.
Okay, go ahead.
What happens is an email comes out from Mr. Brower with your streets, sidewalks, whatever is going to be resurfaced and what have you, back like past, whatever. Then Mr. Brower asks you to reply to him about that capital project or other capital projects, which will happen to your ward. So that's how it happens. When I get that, and I imagine other aldermen get that, they reply back to the person who does this each year. It is not Ken Schroel. I don't reply back to Ken Schroel. He didn't. So at that point, he, I imagine Ken, as a, Mr. Brower, to do that, of course. But in reality, this is the way it happens. So sure, we can copy Ken on every reply, because this is the way it happens. I think it's put up Ken's email box, and necessarily, that's not the way the procedures happen in the past.
I guess I have a question. When would the alderman be actually giving, asking, giving notice? And what, under what circumstance? Because that sounds like the normal course of business, what Alderman Bug is talking about. When would this particular item, portion of the, of the code be used?
When they wanted to let the Public, Public Works and Finance know that they want to hold the money over for a particular project.
So it wouldn't be what you're talking about, Alderman Bug, which is normal course of business? This would be a special circumstance, where you're just looking to hold money over for a particular project that Public Works may have to do in the future? Okay, I mean. Do we withdraw the friendly amendment?
No.
All right. The friendly amendment we're drawing, we got the amendment motion on the floor by Alderman Lash, seconded by Alderman Seville. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
No.
Alderwoman Garza.
No.
Alderman Masiacos.
Pass.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
I, I just want to make sure I know, we're changing the word concurrence to notice?
Yes, that's all we're doing right now. We're just changing the word concurrent to notice, because we're already, we're on the friendly motion. So it's just change the word from notice to concurrent to notice.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
No.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Mormon?
Yes.
Eight yes, four.
Well, go back to Alderman Masiacos.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
All right, nine yes.
Right, motion carries, is to change that one word and language just to give Public Works director notice versus concurrence of any holdovers for projects. All right, do we have anything else? Alderman Bade, you had a question?
So we understand that non-capital fund going forward from 2024 funds, whatever is not spent, unless we mention that it moves to some capital project, it's taken away. But what about the capital? So say we take 75K, 25 is non-capital, and 50 is capital. So what happens to the remaining amount of non-capital? Is there a separate bucket that will be created to separate it from 2023 and before?
For your 2024 amount, if you do not encumber or specify what you're going to use that amount of your allocation for.
Non-capital. Capital.
For capital.
Capital.
Then that will go away at the end of the year. All you have to do is specify, here's what I want to spend it on, and let the Director of Public Works and the city CFO know what you intend on doing, and that's it.
So let the Public Works Department and CFO know, or?
Let them know.
Let them know.
Let them know. And if you change your mind in a subsequent year and wish to spend it on something else, that's okay, you can just revise your notice.
We just send an email?
That's correct.
And that should be it?
Yeah.
They will save it.
Exactly. It's putting your marker on the board, essentially.
And is it going to be added to 2023 and before, or there will be a separate?
The 2023 numbers, whatever you have, will be, will continue, and that will not be subject to this provision.
So I think I didn't understand. So there will be a third bucket or second bucket for 2024 and forward?
Some people's bucket will be, will be filled a little higher based on money left over from previous years.
But this doesn't start until 2024.
Correct.
And then 2024, so if you've got money in before 2024, we vote on this, it don't apply. You have to keep that money.
Yeah.
And you'll always be able to roll it over.
Okay.
As long as you give notice, Ken, you're going to be using it for some project. Alderman Smith?
Just to reiterate, the 2024 was handled in this amendment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lesch?
Just to, maybe to make it easier, I think Alderwoman Smith had an excellent idea to come up with the draft language for the scholarship template. It might also be good to have a draft of what those forms look like for both the rollover and the transfer. I think that might make it easier for us.
It'd probably make it easier to visualize.
To understand how the process works and what we're voting on, just a recommendation.
Alderman Bug?
We already do that. We do it. Alderman do budget every year. And your administrator, you go through with them. They should ask you what you're holding, what, what your line items are for each year, your line items. So I don't think we need to spell it out a second.
So they already do that. But you can talk to the legal and you can get some other stuff done. Make it easy. All right, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Bug?
Since much of this is going to be handled by our faithful Chief of Staff, I'd like for you to just comment on your feelings, and your staff is the one who's going to field these questions. If Alderman A sits down with the budget and says, I want to hold this over, I want to do whatever, we want to make your job as easy as possible, of course.
Now we do.
Rich Jacobs, Chief of Staff, Alderman's Office. I think having things written out and clarified will be immensely helpful to me and my team in understanding what expenses can go where and how you can spend your ward funds or save for your capital projects, or have the money to do your events, do your newsletter. The form certainly can be better structured than what we currently use. It's a form from many, many years ago. We work with legal and the, and the team all the time on many aspects, dealing with your grant programs and contracts, obviously, and other things. So the more that we can have things written out and clarified and be transparent about it, so all of us understand, and it's not an interpretation, will benefit the taxpayers of Aurora.
Alderman Messiakos?
Thank you. Just, and I don't know if it's a question for our Chief, our Chief of Staff, but based on something that was said earlier about transfer funds or whatnot. So you have your budget all set up, and you want to do some type of a, a project that it's towards the end of the year that, you know, and you have $5,000 left. You've allocated $5,000. But, you know, then you get some printing costs as things go up, or right now the postage stamp price just went up. You get a bigger, a bigger area to represent as an alderman as well. There's a few more addresses, for whatever reason, based on district. Let me just give an example of district ward boundaries. What would happen if you needed an extra $500 and you're $500 short in your non-capital funds?
But Alderman, I believe, council, council talked about that. He says specifically, he says specifically you can't encumber money that you don't have. Go ahead.
If, if you needed to take money from your capital fund to cover some non-capital expenses, then you would go to the Finance Committee and ask for?
Finance Committee and ask for more money.
Exactly.
However, however, let's say you only got 75,000 total, and you want to spend 80,000. What does the ordinance say?
The ordinance says you cannot spend it until that money appears. Now, that doesn't preclude an alderman from going to the Finance Committee or going to the council and asking for a budget amendment.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would be something that may be difficult to get, but depending on the circumstances and the justification, the city council may be willing to grant it. So that, that lies within the legislative discretion. And really, the policy that city council wants to have is, you know, whether or not they want to, for a one-off situation, make an adjustment.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah, just to add to your question, so, but if Alderman Messiakos has other funds that he has had, that he has from previous that is not part of these new funds, he can pull that 5,000 from there, correct?
Correct, with permission from the Finance.
With permission from Finance, okay.
And it will, it just the Finance Committee, period. It doesn't go on to COW.
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman?
So my understanding now is with the capital, when we have allocated for years, like Mike asking the same question. So when we have the project for the future, so they want to be accumulate, so this amount for how long?
As long as it take, you can?
So along your eyes know what is what we want to do.
Exactly. And if, what you would, the way I would see this playing, work, playing itself out, you would look at what project you wanted, you would take a look at the funds that you had available, the cost of the project, and then figure out how many years you would need to set aside a certain amount of money, like any sort of budgeting. Also, understanding that the expenses will be larger in the future than they are now and making adjustments for that. You would give your best estimate, and if those numbers change over the years, you can encumber additional funds or fewer funds, however makes sense based on whatever the costs are. And if?
But in short, there is no cap on years.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, because when we have a project, and for some reason, they're not come true, like the project we have in La Salle Street, you remember, Mayor? So a couple of years ago, we're saving money, money in the capital for to brick on La Salle Street. So after Jimmy Allen buy the building and everything changed in there, so nothing happened with the street. We not put the bricks. We put a pave. So the money is there now. We have to have an alternate project, like we want to do on Clay Street. So that money, they can transfer to this other project?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and the beauty of it is, if, for example, you wanted to do bricks to improve an area of your ward, and you save for five years on it, but in year four, the Public Works Department says, you know what, we're going to change that. We're going to redo the entire street, and we're going to put brick pavers in, and it's going to be part of the citywide capital improvement project. So Alderman, thank you for setting aside your funds for four years, but we're going to do this as part of the overall improvement. Then you have those four years of funds to reallocate for a capital improvement that may be different. It's about making sure that at any one time, you can say, this money is set aside for this purpose, even if that purpose eventually changes, that on this day, there is, the money is spoken for.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, Alderman Seville, do you have any additional questions?
No, not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Yamas, do you have any additional questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So Alderman Lesch, you have another question?
With respect to further amending it to change, say, the 60 days to 30 days and moving Section 4 into language that could be approved by, say, the RAP Committee instead of outward exclusion.
Let's talk about one at a time. So are those two different things?
Let me, yes.
All right, so the 30 days, the 60 to 30, is that what, let's talk about that one first.
Well, for both amendments, would you like to make those now on the floor? Or I think moving the language might require preparing an amendment for the council, the whole.
I, I think, Alderman, if you're, if you're looking at changing not less than 60 days into two places that it appears in paragraph three. You're looking at page four and five on the November 22. I think that can be accomplished without a written amendment, with the consent of the COW. And then if we're going to talk about the section about the consultants, that could probably at least be conceptually talked about here if the committee wishes to.
So let's start with the 30 days first. Is there more, I'm sorry, 60 days currently in the, in the code, right?
As drafted.
Alderman Lesch is suggesting that it should be changed from 60 to what? You said 30 days?
30 days.
And what, and what's the, and what's the purpose everybody's aware of?
So the rationale is that if, as I gave the hypothetical, at the last minute, Alderman Tolliver gets a higher-end speaker that costs more than $3,000 to attend a function of his, the, it could be delayed for 60 days to try and shorten the timeline, especially as some of these events, and they're largely ward events, require advertising and telling the community about it, and if you do have that speaker, to publicize it adequately. So it just shortens the timeline a little bit from 60 to 30 days.
Alderman Smith?
And I'll make a motion if you want to have a motion discussion to begin the second.
I believe the 60 days was put into place very specifically because?
Hold on, one second, Alderman Smith. Hold on a second. So it'll be the motion by Alderman Lesch, seconded by Alderman, Alderman Garza. A question, discussion, go ahead, Alderman Smith.
I believe the 60 days was put in very purposefully because of a few situations that have happened in the past where aldermen have, have come up on a couple weeks and have, you know, not gotten a speaker or whatever component to that event or activity, and then put a lot of pressure on not only the alderman's office, on the Finance Department, and to get the money. So the 60 days is to keep an alderman accountable to being, making the plans for their event and getting it done in the appropriate amount of time, so that there's 12 of us, you know, like, like I, I think Rick said, if 10 of us do the same thing in the, in 30 days, that's a lot of pressure to put on our staff. And we got to get checks written, you know, you're not just, you're not just saying, I'm going to have this person, you have to get checks written for this person. So I think 60 days was put in for a purpose, and it was put in because of, of experiences that we have had here.
Mr. Minnick, can you step up to the microphone for a second? Just so the aldermen are aware, all the aldermen are aware, and we are as well, how, when an alderman puts in a check request, what's the period of time in notice that you had, that they have to go through to actually get that check issued?
Yeah, typically, it would, 30 days would be pretty close to about the minimum. So the, I mean?
The minimum?
Yeah, yeah. So just because of the way the check cycles are, and because of how many invoices we enter and things of that nature, it tends to run a couple weeks ahead of time between when the cutoff is and when the checks are actually printed. Now, in emergency situations, we can make accommodations, but as Alderwoman Smith just indicated, you know, one check, two checks are one thing, but if we, if we do have a crush of 10, and then, you know, I, I believe there's also typically legal reviews, contracts, or, or agreements that we may have with individual speakers, things of that nature, it can get a little crush.
So the 60 days was not necessarily, was, was the alderman putting in a request, legal reviewing, if there's a, a contract, as well as going through Finance? So would 45 days suffice, or is it, because at 30 days, we'd just be for the, just be for Finance? We need however many weeks that legal needs, which is normally how long?
It may be up to two weeks, depending on to what extent we need to communicate with the speaker. In some of these instances, the speakers don't have form contracts, or if they do, we need to do a little bit of negotiating. What I would point out, though, that the 60-day clock is notice to the chairperson of the RAP Committee to put it on the agenda. So you may have a situation where an alderman provides notice to the RAP Chair just after a RAP Committee adjourns. Then you've got two weeks before that RAP Committee meets again. And then, at that point, that may be when you have the direction to staff to move forward with it, and at that point, maybe when it gets the finance released. So it is a, 60 days seems like a long time, but particularly in local government, and it's a calendar day, not business day, it, it moves faster than I think people realize at times.
Alderman, so really, I'll come to Alderman Franco, so really, 30 days sounds like an emergency, because it has to go to Finance, has to go through Legal, so that becomes the emergency, 30 days.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting to. Is there any language in here that gives us a vehicle, that if we run into a situation, whether it be a 60-day, if we reduce it to 30 days, that we can get around after that, one special case? Is there a way to do that?
Splitting hairs here.
There is, there is the ability for the RAP Committee Chair, Vice Chair, if, if the Chair is conflicted, essentially, to permit consideration to go to RAP fewer than 60 days.
Okay.
So there is the ability to condense that timeline if necessary. Remembering also that not every request has to go to the RAP Committee.
Alderman Tolliver, did you have any?
No, I'm okay with that.
Alderman Warren?
This was 100% put in for exactly what Alderman Smith said. It's to keep us on track, instead of us just being able to dump it and say, get it done. We have some accountability here, I think. I appreciate what Alderman Lesch said, and I think that's more the exception than the norm. You know, it's, there's a process to it, and the 12 people here that put the pressure on Finance and everybody else to jump through hoops is ridiculous, in my opinion. I think the 60 days is something we need to stick with. It was put in there for, historically, what aldermen do, that's a why it was decided at 60 days, and I just think that we're splitting hairs over this, and?
In the reality, most of these programs we're talking about are things that have been going on for years.
Exactly.
So we all know that it's happening, it's going to go on.
We know the rules, we need to apply to.
Right, so 60 days shouldn't be that onerous.
100% done for, to keep us on track.
Unless there's an emergency circumstance, where you don't, you know, you get your speaker at the last minute, because they don't commit.
Yeah.
That's an emergency circumstance. So are, you want to withdraw that, 60 days?
It doesn't sound like there's support from the committee. If there's a second, I'll go ahead with it. Alderman, Alderman Garza, first of all, I just want to clarify, the 60 days is just, as it reads, notification from when the person putting the event together, when the Chair or Vice Chair of the Committee acts. And, you know, this, all this does is cut down that time to put it on the agenda, and it should be a simple vote. Yeah, sure, you could do it within three days if the next RAP meeting was in three days. So the vehicle does exist, should we want to expedite it, but I just think removing it gives it that three days.
Can we move on to the next?
All right, so if you're going to withdraw the 60 days?
We can vote.
Motion?
If we need to vote, but can we just?
There's a motion at a second. If you want to vote on it, that'd be great if it fails or fails.
Motion at a second to?
Can I just say one more thing?
Go ahead.
We have to be respectful to our staff.
I agree.
And 30 days is not respectful to our staff. 60 days is giving the staff the time to get the work done that they need to get done. If there's an exception, that can happen. But to, to say 30 days, and then an alderman comes down to three weeks, and oh, well, you know, it's just a week off, you know, I just think we need to be very respectful to the people that help us get our, get our projects done.
So you say you don't want to withdraw, there's a motion at a second, so Madam Clerk, call the roll, just to be clear, so everybody's clear. Alderman Lesch voted to reduce the period of notice for check requests from 60 to 30. We've heard debate about why it's at 30 from both Legal, both our CFO, as well as, as many aldermen. So a vote yes would reduce it 30 days, a vote no would keep it as it's stated in the, in the ordinance now at 60 days. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
No.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
No, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me see. I meant, I meant no. I'll vote.
Alderman Franco?
Hold on, hold on a second, because I think there's some confusion.
Yes.
Voting no means it stays 60 days.
Okay, no. Thank you.
So that's Alderman Messiakos, a no.
Yeah.
Alderman Denal, also a no. Alderman Franco?
No.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Since we have the vehicle for the exception, I'll vote no.
Alderwoman Smith?
No.
Alderman Bug?
No.
Alderwoman Bade?
No.
Alderman Lesch?
Yes.
Alderman Mormon?
No.
Nine no, three yes.
All right, motion is defeated. Let's go on to the next thing. What's the next thing we're talking about?
I'll move item four, page five. And this is one of the? Number four, this is going to require some rework if we're able to move it. And basically, it's one, one of the exclusions, item four, paid, currently page five on mine, says for professional or consultative services, except when required, as part of the authorized public improvement project. So this, I would like to see if, you know, there wants to be some more oversight, have it moved up to the sort of similar procedure of going through RAP for consideration, instead of making a blanket exclusion.
What if we said, what if the amendment that you proposed would say for professional or consultative services, except when required, as part of an authorized public improvement project, and when authorized by the RAP Committee, by the Committee? So then that, that way you have the exception, it's not a blank prohibition, and the RAP Committee would be able to consider that.
Well, why was it a blank prohibition in the first place? Explain.
The, the basis for that would have been whether or not you, you would have the alder person hiring an engineer, or an accountant, or something along those lines, that were clearly out of the scope of what these funds were for. That's why it was tied to the public improvement project. If there is a, a situation, I wasn't able to think of, where professional or consultative services were necessary or useful, that were, apart from authorized public improvement, then this would give the RAP Committee the discretion to consider that approval. The alderman would not be able to use that without the approval of the RAP Committee, but it would open the door a little bit for some potential out-of-the-box thinking.
Clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Seville?
How does, how does an individual Alderman hire consultant services without the, the vote of the City Council? I can't sign a contract, I have no authority as, as a legislator.
Well, you, you are correct, Alderman Seville. To some extent, all of this, what we've been doing with ward programs, does effectively change the role of the Alderman from that of a legislator. That's been effectively the way that the process has operated for a number of years. In this particular situation, the Alderman would be able to expend the funds for that purposes. I don't believe the Alderman would be able to sign the contract themselves.
Can, can I ask Alderman Seville a question?
Oh, go ahead.
Alderman Seville, you've been around a long time. Have you seen a situation where an Alderman has hired an outside service like this?
In my memory, and the reason why I bring it up, is when we were planning for the Plum Park, on the corner of Plum and Grand, in my ward, we hired a consultant design, Martin Design Group, and it had to go through City Council, and of course, the Loud Department reviewed it. So, I went to the process and get council approval before I expended the funds, based on the list that was submitted.
Mr. Alexander?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so, I'm just concerned, the way it's written, for professional or consultative services, except when required, as part of an authorized public improvement project, that leaves it wide open, and the concern I would have, after all these years, is every year, we budget, we plan for projects, far and wide, throughout every department in the city, throughout the entire city. And so, this could hypothetically mean that an Alderman could hire some professional engineer, contrary to what was approved, taking taxpayer funds, basically as another person against the administration. So, there are lines here that.
Remember, for council members that was on the, on the last City Council, that happened at the Aldermen's Office already, and I believe this is one of the things that we want to, want to prevent.
So, I just, I, I'm just very concerned, I think, I'm, I'm not sure what the intent is of the amendment, but to not make this as an exclusion, now we're blurring the lines between the administrat, administrative function, the professional engineering function, public works, and the legislative branch. I, I just see a, a real issue here, and then what happens if the consultants don't agree? Now, we're putting the council in direct opposition to potentially an already budgeted project, and already agreed upon direction. It just, it's very concerning to me, after all these years doing this, to see this come up as an exclusion. I mean, come up not as an exclusion.
Well, I, I really wasn't going to comment, but then you brought it up. Yes, that would be a problem, because if I disagreed with, with the city was doing, what, what's to say that I can't go out and find somebody in the world on the internet to, to basically support my narrative? You know, I, we can't have that, we just can't. You know, we, this is why we have staff and professionals do that. That's a great point, Mr. Alexander, I didn't even think about, but that's a perfect point. You can't have it. You know, there's, you know, we're, this is a team effort. We, we support the team, there's a staff to go out and get the stuff. If I don't like it, then I'll tell them, I'm not going to find a guy that says, well, you're wrong, you know, even though you've got these thousand people that says you're right, I got this one guy that says you're wrong, can't have it. It would just, it would be, create too much dissension, and you're right, and we do have legal problems out the kazoo with that. So, I, I didn't even think about that, but that's a great point.
As drafted right now, where the exception is, where you have the exception, it wasn't necessarily intended that the Alderman would go out and get a consultant. It would be if, for example, the Alderman wished to do, whether it be a sound wall, and there were some engineering associated, that this expense associated with that, city was going to have to pay for, ward funds could be used for that. It wouldn't necessarily be a situation where the Alder Person would go out and hire an engineering company, or hire an accountant, or something like that. If there are professional expenses associated with a ward project, that the city would have to effectively absorb, then those ward funds could be used for that purpose. That was the intent of creating that, that narrow exception.
Well, this, this wording there, in my, in my world, is, is good. Changing them, I think is what you're saying would be the problem, because I've already done that. I've already spent money, ward funds, based on a public project that can show up approved in the whole department, and I did spend money on engineering. I said, you go out and get the consultant, you take care of it, here's the money. So, that is in there. Changing that would be a problem, I think. I truly believe that.
Well, I don't think that's what we're talking about.
Can you turn your.
I'm not sure that's what we're talking about. Overall, I, I believe we're talking about, and I'll give you a perfect example, so, engineering, when they come out, again, with their streets and sidewalks and that, engineering doesn't have a full budget to resurface or upgrade bike paths. That is put back on the ward Alderman. So, if I wanted to do something major with, with my bike path, those funds will not come from engineering, and I want to do something, and I want to put ward funds to hire a consultant to redesign my bike paths, or, I don't know, do whatever with them, would I have the ability to do that? And then, I guess I would go in front of the RAP Committee, under, I guess, what Alderman Lesch is saying, or as Mr. Beanstrut's proposing, and I would be able to present my case, I'm going to spend these funds, this consultant's going to help, we're going to redo bike paths in this way, and that's what we're doing.
Who hires the consultant?
Um, I, I imagine the ward Alderman did, because engineering does not. They, they don't.
But it says right here, that's a public improvement.
It's a public improvement.
So, you would, so that would be okay?
Yeah, you already got, yeah.
Your, your situation is okay, because this is a public improvement that you're talking about right now.
Mr. Mayor, again, though, traditionally, I don't know that it would even need to get to that point, because every year, there's conversations with all the Aldermen about their wards, about their public improvement projects. In that scenario, Alderman Bug, I would think at some point, you would say, hey, I want to improve the bike path in my ward, we would budget, we would talk about that, we'd work with the right professionals, and you would not need to hire that consultant, because the city would do it as part of the approved budgeted project. Now, unless something came up after the budget, that suddenly was a great need, still, even in that scenario, I think you would work with the administration, Ken, his team, and we'd come up with a solution, and if there was no budget, and it was to come out of the city budget, then we'd entertain an amendment. Or, if you wanted to, you could say, and we've done this with a lot of Aldermen over the years, I'm going to put some ward funds towards this project, 50/50, 25/75, whatever it is. So, I just don't know, you know, we, we, we might be overthinking this a bit.
I think your point is, the way the ordinance is drafted now, it allows Alderman Bug to do exactly what he just.
It does, without having to change it.
Right, without having to change it and open it up for you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to just, because this has wandered all over the place, I was not even thinking of capital funds. What I described in my scenario earlier, when we were discussing this, when it was up on the screen, was potentially using this to bring in an expert who could help people, residents navigate their way through some of the IRA dollars and SEGA dollars to bring more money into our community.
We have a department.
Now, that can be done, that can be done through a nonprofit, but I don't want to see it excluded. Another potential use is if, let's say, you wanted to do a community survey and hire someone to do that for Ward Five, specific to Ward Five, just to prepare for the budget or any ward, that you would have that ability. Now, I don't believe that we should be hiring consultants to duplicate the work that city staff already does. I agree with that sentiment that's been expressed by a number of people. I just wanted to create a vehicle to achieve some of those things.
Well, I was just going to say, my concern is, my concern is going off the rails. I did do a survey seven years ago through Invest Aurora, so I used a vehicle through the Sea of Aurora, so, I don't know that Aldermen should have the discretion about going out and finding who they want for anything. Even if I'm going to help somebody with navigating financial stuff, I don't know that that would be in the realm of what we're supposed to do, as opposed to say, we need this done, help me get this done, city, I'll pay for it. But I, because, you know, I don't, I don't want to say anybody's got nefarious thoughts in here, but if I wanted to go out and do something kind of crazy with my money, if we changed this, I kind of could, and I might be going against the grain, and I think that would be a dangerous place to be. I, I just think right now, everything that you mentioned, everything that everybody else mentioned, there's a way to get it done through the process that we already have in place, and there's safeguards with that. When, I think if you go independently on that, it becomes a problem, because you could be looking at things that nobody else wants to even deal with, but that's your discretion, because we put it in the order, and you can go find anybody you want. So, I, I just think that's something that's a dangerous way to go with this, because there is nothing that we want to do that we can't get done through the city and the services and staff that they have for us. There's all vehicles all over, all we got to do is pay for it. So, that's kind of why I would go that way.
Would you make a motion, if you want to?
To do the ward, to do the survey in Ward Five, did you use ward funds?
I did use ward funds, but I went through Invest Aurora. I didn't go out and find an independent person.
Well, how is that any, it's not a city.
Because they're a public, private partnership in the Sea of Aurora.
Arnold Franco, hold on one second, Alderman. If you have, if you have a motion you want to put on the floor, put it on the floor, and then we'll.
I don't think there's going to be support for this. I, I.
All right, well, then we're moving on? All right. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns based on the rest? Alderman Bade?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say thank you to RAP Committee. They have been going over this for a really long time, maybe several weeks or months. This is the first time we've got a chance to discuss as a committee, and I would request if we can keep it on, at City Council, Committee of the Whole level for another two weeks, so we can see all the changes that are in the final document, and then go forward with it. If we have any further questions, we can still address at Committee of the Whole, otherwise it will go to next level.
We, we know council will not be present. Is it possible we can move it forward to Committee of, um, City, City Council, and any discussion we have in the next two weeks? Wait, City Council's next week?
Next week.
Oh, so, yeah. So, all right, there's been a motion, to hold it here for two weeks, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and everybody's had a chance to review with the amendments and review in detail.
I'll second it.
There's been a second fight. Alderman Seville? I don't, I don't think we need a roll call for that one, do we? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, we'll hold it here for two weeks.
Thank you.
And then we'll vote on it after we've had time to review it. So, we're just going to hold it here for what? To move it forward.
What is the original plan, Mayor?
Original plan is to sit at City Council next week.
So, my, my concern with holding it here for two weeks is just that, if we see these changes, and now we're back here at Cal in two weeks, and we have more discussion that leads to more changes, it's never going to leave Cal. So, I just want everyone to keep that in mind, be prepared in two weeks with your final questions, make sure you review everything before the meeting, so that nothing's a surprise at Cal, and then we have a repeat of this. I just feel like we're starting, it's, it's becoming a trend now, where things are getting held up at the committee or at Cal for needless reasons, when we should all be prepared to understand the materials at the meeting, and be prepared to have our questions, just like when does their homework and prepares for school, prepares for discussion. So, it's not specific to this, but I just, I, I need to express this to my colleagues, because it is getting frustrating, frustrating when we're not getting things done during our meetings like we should be. We all need to be prepared and understand what we're talking about, so we can ask the